I want to call the meeting to order for the Board of Supervisors for February 7th, 2012. Roll call.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Foote?
Here.
And Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here. And today we have Tanya Kellum. Tanya, come over here to the -- this is 2-1-1 Director of Interface and Family Services. She is recognized statewide as one of the ones who started 2-1-1 in Ventura County. And the success, call center has been that was started back in 2005, and she'd like to share a couple of words with us this morning. Welcome, Tanya.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you so much for the opportunity--
Put the speaker up. Mics together. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Good morning, my name's Tanya Kellum. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and share some information about 2-1-1. I can't take credit for starting the service, I joined the service in 2008, but at the time that it started, 2-1-1 Ventura was the first 2-1-1 service in the state of California, and we're very proud of that. We're actually hitting our 7th anniversary this month. I hope you can all join us at our anniversary event on Friday at the Office of Education. And in the time that I've been with 2-1-1, I have to say, the most inspiring thing, thinking of a moment of inspiration, is that not only can we help people with the immediate needs that they have when they call, they often have some particular part of their situation that they're needing assistance with, whether that's food or shelter, mental health services, domestic violence services, senior services, really anything across the range of health and human services, but that we can also plant a seed for future assistance as well. Because, as you know, the human services realm, both public and private, can be very confusing, and families are often struggling with multiple needs at the same time. A family who's dealing, who might need some assistance around food, may also need help with grief issues or parent support. And that's something that 2-1-1, because we are a holistic service, because we really cover that full range, when we're talking with someone about one need, we can bring up options, we can plant a seed for future assistance. They can always call us back, or we can give them referrals in that same call. So we're able to address all of those pieces. Our goal is really to support Ventura residents and the whole network of services, to strengthen that network. We also do that through our partnerships, our strong relationships with the Human Services Agency and Healthcare Agency, as well as with other organizations like Local Child Care Resource and Referral, and our Volunteer Center, to make sure that we're also not replicating any services. We also make 2-1-1 as simple to contact as possible. We're available 24/7, 90% of our staff are bilingual, bicultural, and English and Spanish, and we provide services in over 150 additional languages through teleinterpretation service. The service is free, it's confidential, it's anonymous if the person wants it to be, it's completely stigma-free, and we're available to everyone in Ventura County. We've also been able to help through that service over 22,000 callers in 2011, in the last calendar year, and that's by providing referrals through our database of over 1,200 programs, over 400 agencies in this county, and we're just helping more people every day. Right now, we're actually even scheduling appointments for VITA services, for low-income tax preparation assistance services as well, to make that transition to services as seamless as possible. So, thank you again for your support of 2-1-1, we really appreciate the support of the Board and the county, and for the opportunity to come and speak. The support and recognition of 2-1-1 are greatly appreciated.
And Tanya, thank you so much, and I understand that United Way really is working a lot with you two with Interface--
Oh, definitely. I'm sorry that I missed this. 2-1-1 Ventura is a program of Interface Children and Family Services in partnership with United Way Ventura County and First 5 Ventura County. And thank you so much for the proclamation presented later today. We'll have some other representatives here as well.
And thank you for sharing this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the Pleasure of Legions. We'll ask Michael to help us with the pledge.
[applause] "Pleasure of legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Our next item is the minutes of January the 10th. First and second, all in favor? Okay, and the opposed? That's passed. A better vote. Is it working? Thank you, that's approved. And, well, okay, Michael, next item at number six. Any agenda review or changes or revisions to the agenda? Michael?
Yes, thank you Chair Zaragoza. A few items. Item 14, there's a revised title due to a revised board letter, adding two new recommendations, the addition of addenda numbers one and two to recommendation number one, and the addition of exhibit three. Don't ask me what that means.
Was that sent out to us electronically? I'm sorry, the revisions--
The revisions, yeah.
Okay. On the desk, okay.
All right, and then on item 32, there's a revised agenda title to reflect the public hearing is being held for the Santa Clarita Valley Area Plan Update, not Santa Clara Valley.
That's right.
That's right. And then, regular agenda item 31, there's a revision to draft 2012 Board of Supervisors' meeting schedule. Calendar since January 24, 2012, May 28, 2012 should reflect green--
That's right.
--as holiday, and July 10, 2012 should reflect blue for no Board of Supervisor meeting that day.
Mm-hmm.
I'm doing my colors. What's that? I thought you'd be okay with that.
Okay, any supervisors have any agenda items? No, we're okay. So, okay, so then, what's the pleasure of the Board? Got a motion from Supervisor Foote.
Second.
Second from Supervisor Long. And, okay. This vote. And that's approved unanimously. And number seven, we have items on 10 to 17 consent items. What's the pleasure of the Board on that?
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Supervisor Foote, second by Supervisor Bennett. We'll vote.
Comment on item 11.
Okay.
And it is great to see the potential for 11 units of permanent supportive rental housing for extremely low-income households who are chronically homeless, with at least one adult member who meets the Ventura County Mental Health Services Act criteria for mental illness. So, this is just another example of us gradually building out the continuum of care here. We Supervisor Long and I co-chair the 10-year plan to end homelessness update committee, and this, we're keenly aware that we need for this type of housing. And research has shown, time and time again, that if you help people stabilize and you treat their illness, they begin to, they can begin to function properly if they have a roof over their head. It's very, very difficult to treat mental illness without a roof over their head. So, I want to thank Many Mansions, City of Simi Valley, the Area Housing Authority, and Ventura County Behavioral Health. Exciting project, and I look forward to them returning the Board with an update with Many Mansions. So, congratulations for behavioral health, and everybody else that pulled this one together. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor.
Just, if I might, certainly agree. Excellent work as we take step by step on this, and as the 10-year plan on this update, we'll be bringing it forward for community town hall meetings, and moving it forward probably by June or so.
Okay, so that's approved. Consent items 10 to 17, and item number eight is public comments, and I have Kelly Barth. Kelly?
Thank you. My name is Kelly Barth. We're at 800 South Victoria here in Ventura County, California. This is number four for the meetings that I've come to attend here. The first one dated back to June 18, 2008, I'm sorry. Let's see, returning back to continuous dynamic sequence, I read some John Stuart Mill the last time I was here. So, I'm gonna read a little bit of that, and then I'm gonna do a little more reading from some county authorized documents, county authored documents. In regards to John Stuart Mill, "We are at the limits of the authority of society over the individual." I'll just read a short paragraph of this. "What then is the rightful limit of the sovereignty of the individual over himself? Where does the authority of society begin, and how much of human life should be assigned to individuality, and how much to society? Each will receive its proper share. If each has that which more particularly concerns it, to individuality should belong the part of life which is chiefly the individual that is interested to society, in part the part which chiefly interests society." Now, there's been a conflict that's been going on in this county here for quite some time. And I've done a great deal of research, I've done nothing but research for about seven years now, I've got about 20,000 documents. The most fascinating ones are the county authored ones, and of course, the court transcripts. I'm gonna start here with some county authored documents. This is a job description for somebody here in Ventura County. I don't know the name of the job, but it's a class code 1587, and it starts out, "Description benefits: Under supervision, general supervision, direction, quote, senior, ensures the observance of statutory, regulatory, and case law is applied to the rights of the mentally ill." Here's another one. Class code 1584, "Under supervision, general supervision, direction, senior ensures the observance of statutory, regulatory, and case law applied to the rights of mentally ill." Let's see, here's one. Job description, 1740. "Under general supervision, provides technical administrative support in claims, litigation, or risk services section of risk management." Here's another one. "Under general direction, plans implements and supervises a comprehensive children's mental health service system for Ventura County. Operation management of a specialized program." There's another one. Class code 500, "Under general supervision, trains new staff, researchers, and processes criminal records, provides information to law enforcement personnel and general public, updates state, local, and federal computer databases, serves as technical resources." Now, let's return to a court transcript here. This is February, January 13, 2005. There's a Tom Johnson present here, he's the deputy district attorney, child abduction unit, and he is a special government employee. Page two. "Mr. Johnson, your honor, we have been appointed by the court to assist the respondent here with his orders. Our office has had some background with this case regarding both parties. We took a good cause report from the petitioner here on December 31, 2003, and January 14, 2004, in which she said she was receiving threats of violence from the respondent here. There was a criminal matter filed on February 9, 2004, regarding the restraining order violation. That restraining order has expired on its own terms on May 4. Incidentally, that restraining order was granted in violation of due process." Page two, Mr. Johnson, now, let's see, here's my attorney. "Your honor, we had no idea where Ms. Patam resided. We had no way of contacting her. She disappeared for a year. Ever since she had Mr. Barth arrested, she had completely disappeared, and the district attorney's office would not assist us in contacting her because they were under the impression that the alleged allegations in the criminal case were correct." Now, Mr. Johnson interrupts. "Mr. Johnson, if I may just clarify on that point, the mother here has been in contact and has given us her address, so we have always known where she was. I'd like to note here that the last thing my child, my son, said to me on Christmas Eve 2003 was, 'Help me Dad, my mom, ah,' and then the phone went dead. We were unable to speak directly and respond to this matter because there was a pending criminal investigation, rather, a case, and we said that we could only speak with the attorney."
Mr. Barth, your time's up.
Okay. I'll be back next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Portillo.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Portillo. I am one of the students of Oxnard College, and we here represent OCTV, and the students that couldn't be here that probably wanted to. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the super, the whole Board for their support in helping us, or for offering their support while we were trying to organize this grassroots campaign to save our program. And more specifically, I'd like to thank you Supervisor Zaragoza for your feedback and for actually going out of your way to speak for us, and that was really helpful, and, you know, we do thank you for that. It was, it's nice to know that the system can work, and there are a lot of people in our community that do not know that and wouldn't bother to try, and it's nice to have this that we can share with other people. And, you know, for those of you that don't know, or anybody that might not know, we were actually allotted an extra year, and the program is safe for an entire year. And that's thanks, a lot of that is thanks to you guys for offering your support to us, and we'd like to thank you all for that.
And we want to thank you for your efforts, because you went and spoke to different agencies, not only the Board of Supervisors, but city councils, and school boards, and your efforts really helped tremendously, because really, there's democracy at its best, you know, and we heard you, so, thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
And I would agree. You guys showed that when you care about something, you come up and you do something about it, and it worked, and you got another year. And I'd say, there's gonna be some tough times ahead, don't give up now, keep going forward, but congratulations, and continue to make us proud.
Thank you. Supervisor--
I also want to, it was very nice to hear that you got a reprieve for a year, and considering what you do, and just what you said, the idea that a lot in the community don't realize that you can make a difference. What a great film you could make on just this, so I encourage that.
Yes, thank you all.
Supervisor-- You know, you guys live lives that don't normally have you showing up at the government center at 8:30 in the morning, so that's just really a compliment to your commitment to this program and trying to keep it going, and particularly to show up to say thank you is close above and beyond the call of duty, so I want to thank all five of you.
Thank you.
Thank you tremendously. Okay, with that note, with that good note, we'll go into the Board comments, and we'll start with Supervisor Foote.
Thank you. I do not have any adjournments today, which is always good to hear, and, you know, I'm gonna try to keep this meeting going, so I'm not gonna, there's something I wanted to say, but we'll just move forward.
Oh, can I hear it?
Supervisor Long?
Just two things. One is, yesterday I had the opportunity to celebrate with SolarWorld GT in the U.S. tour of a solar car, and it's, SolarWorld, of course, has been in Camarillo since 1975, and they're one of the biggest global companies that build and work on solar systems. But yesterday, they had a prototype solar-driven car that is doing a global world expedition to, one, get in the Guinness Book, but also test this prototype. They're going 21,000 mile quest to circle the globe and break a world record, and these young folks who were there, who obviously engineers, et cetera, were very excited about this prototype, excited to show it off, and it looks like a Porsche, only it's yellow and has all these sponsorship names on it also, but it was quite exciting to hear their excitement about the journey. And they go 100 miles a day, and of course, they ferry over, when they, they're starting in the United States, and going over to Europe, and end up in Australia. And they talked about the system itself, the engineering and the design components, and it was really good, really good to see this excitement around a alternative opportunity for, they're, they're, probably looking at 10 years down the road before you really see something that's affordable to do. The frame on the car and the body of the car is a carbon, carbon material, so it's one, expensive, and two, not easy to replicate, but anyway, that's as much engineering as I know, so, it's dangerous when I start down that road. Anyway, it was fun to be there. I will ask my son, in fact, I sent it to him. In fact, you can go on Facebook, and it is Global World GT, and go on Facebook, and like them, and also compete to look at what route they're taking, how soon they'll get their variety of things, and win an iPad, but I thought it was pretty cool that they're doing it, yeah. And the last, as I have adjourned in memory of some folks in the district, two of which I'll call out personal friends. Suzanne McCouch, I knew Suzanne back in the late 80s, 90s, she was one of the real drivers to help us establish childcare advisory councils, and very active in the childcare community. A professor, wrote books on experiences for preschoolers, and just a very known, active member in our community. And then from Juanita Kirk-Potit. Juanita, I knew again back in the 80s and 90s, she was past president, founding member of the Ventura County Professional Women's Network. Both very strong women, and also, the last one, John Rich, iconic director and producer of The Dick Van Dyke Show, All in the Family, I'm Mary Joan, I'm Miss Brooks, Gunsmoke, Bonanza, et cetera. I knew John, and his wife, Pat, have known them for years, and actually have had conversations with him, and just a very interesting man, I think, in many ways. The programs that he was a director-producer of changed our social conscience. Adjourned in memory of those, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor.
Thank you. I just want to take note that Westlake High School won the county's academic decathlon, so that was nice to see, and actually, Thousand Oaks High School came in third. So, go Lancers and go Warriors. Additionally, I was able to attend the Economic Outlook that they had at Cal Lutheran University, and to hear some good presentations about the economy, and some very interesting perspectives. And then also, Supervisor Long and myself were in attendance at the Cal State University Island Site Authority, and got to hear some pretty positive upbeat things from President Rush there, including the fact that the university is actually allowing for more students there when we're seeing a lot of the others having to cut back, so that was nice to see also. I was also able to attend a senior congress that was put on by the Caneo Las Vergenes Foundation, and it was wonderful to see that many seniors in a room together and getting really good advice on wellness, and we can bring that back to use in our senior summit as we move forward. And also able to attend a naming ceremony for Las Vergenes Middle School. It was actually not the school, but for the Boys and Girls Club, and Marion and John, John Anderson, his name is affixed to that Boys and Girls Club, and it's great to see people stepping up to fund such a worthwhile activity, and hearing the good things about what Boys and Girls Clubs do, and we all have them in our districts and appreciate them a lot, and Sheriff Dean was there for that also. And then finally, I would ask that we close in honor of two people among, well, just two people on my list, and one was just a very sad, very quick death of our MAC member in Casa Canejo. Her name is Clara Deemer, and just a wonderful, you know, person to have in your neighborhood, and a lovely friend, and just was diagnosed and succumbed to cancer, it seemed like, in one month, you know, so it was very shocking to see, and our hearts go out to Bill and her family and the whole community as we have a loss. And then also, I would like to ask that we close in honor of Rabbi Mordecai Briski, who's the father of Rabbi Moshe Briski, and Rabbi Briski is the director of the Havad in the Canejo in Agora Hills, and his father was quite a man in terms of what he went through, his life story really could be a movie. He was the only member of his family, of four sisters and one brother, to survive the Holocaust and the epic journey to get out of Poland at the time. It's just very harrowing, and then just as a, you know, having studied and become a rabbi, really loved in the community, so I know he is very much my soster. And that concludes my adjournments and my comments.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much Supervisor Zaragoza. We all had the, four of us had the pleasure of being at Ventura County Taxpayers Association and watch our CEO, Mike Powers, present probably more complete and updated information about county services, including our pension program, and I think that was a good program all the way around in terms of educating people. And while we still have some issues at the, with a particular small set, I think it really demonstrated that for the vast, vast majority of our retirees, we have appropriate program in place, and still some changes that need to be made. The Ventura Chamber of Commerce installation meeting was that same night, so I couldn't swing, so I had one of my staff attend that, because they were both at the same time. The next night, in Supervisor Long's lovely city of Santa Paula, was a fundraiser for a Haitian orphanage, and it's an annual event that has started at Darbins, but it's almost all Ventura city people that moved out to Darbins, and so I want to congratulate them. They raised about $40,000 for this orphanage, Hands and Feet Project in Haiti. I had the pleasure of attending the Ojai Eagle Scout Ceremony. Those are always reinforcing in terms of sort of that positive feeling. Miners Oaks, two wonderful Miners Oaks young men. The other thing I just want to point out, it's on our correspondence agenda, which we just usually move through very quickly, I think this time, I think we have to point out it's distressing, we are really struggling back and forth, you know, the economy's improving a little bit, but the correspondence agenda identifies 379 jobs being lost in four different businesses located in East County, Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, and Moore Park. And these are notifications that we're supposed to receive in advance, but it does remind us that there's a continued need for assistance for short-term homeless prevention, because some of these 379 people may not be able to find other income in time to keep their rent going. Our number one goal with the homeless program has been to decrease the number of people becoming homeless, so if you can keep them housed, you dramatically decrease the problems. Once they become homeless, you complicate the problems, and it's much, much more difficult to get them back in. So, hopefully, we can keep moving forward with our homeless prevention efforts, and these people in particular may be some of those people, so. Two things on the homeless front. One, 11 units for the mentally ill that we got, and 379 people, 379 jobs being lost, certainly, they're not all gonna lose their homes, but we have to keep our eyes open for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
If I may, I just wanted to also laud our Sheriff's Department. We had a robbery in one of the homes in our district in Thousand Oaks area, and actually, a construction worker noted that a man was coming out of the building, the home, and confronted the individual, and the individual was saying that he was there to, that he was actually the homeowner's son, and the construction worker knew that was not the case. The police were called, and just, you know, this is another one of those times when someone in your neighborhood speaks up, looks, and finds that something's not right, the sheriffs were able to come with a K-9, find the perpetrator, and arrest him. So, it's just another really good work on our Sheriff's Department, and also what, you know, the Neighborhood Watch type of folks that get out there and report something unusual in your neighborhood. in your neighborhood. My kudos to the Sheriff's Department, and I'll stop there.
Thank you so much. And I would also like to adjourn in memory of those folks on this list, and I have a couple of items I'd like to report to the board. On January 28th, Supervisor Long and I attended the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce in Salishan Gala and presented a resolution to the outgoing chair, and it was attended by quite a few people. It was a great, great program. Couple of comedians over there, talked about Oxnard and Camry, but it was, it was good. Then on the 30th, I attended a, with Ventura County Community Foundation in Southern California Gas where they presented $2,500 grant to the VC Cool cause and Ojai Valley Green Coalition for their efforts in helping with the environment. And during that time, too, the Southern Gas folks were also taking applications for young folks that wanted to be meter readers, which is really great, you know? And apparently, they signed up 10 individuals, you know, there at the Café en A, which I think was really great. This is a training program that Southern California Gas has. And also, I attended the, another, and I'm sure, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, this is an episode or a program that comes on on TV, The Diners Drive-In and Dives. They were in Oxnard in the kitchen, and there must have been about 450 people there on a Thursday. And it was really great, you know, Guy Ferreri, I think is his name, is the, and it was just fantastic. They had nationwide, you know, they picked the kitchen from Oxnard as the winners of that particular week. So it was really great to be on TV also. I'm not sure if they saw me, but I was there. And also, I'd like to share that, I want to thank Jeff and Reddy Pacala. We got informed that APWA has selected the El Rio Sewer Project as a Project of the Year, and also the, we are also going to be recognized by the Engineers Week, the APWA POY engineers. And this is great, it's going to be a great honor to receive, understanding that we're going to have the, there's going to be a dinner at the Reagan Library on the 23rd, and that we're going to be there to receive that award. And I just want to thank Jeff and Pacala and all his staff for all the excellent work we did in El Rio. I know I attended about 11 meetings, sharing with the people how to, you know, connect to the sewer system, what the process was, and, in Spanish and English. In fact, we had meetings, and I think it was from 5:00 to 7:00 were English and from 7:00 to 9:00 were Spanish. And the important thing, board members, was that all our staff was there. The staff was there to sign up the people. They had government right at the neighborhood, signing up for permits and paying, so as opposed to having to come into the government center, they actually signed up there, you know, for the sewer system. So I just want to thank Mr. Pratt and Pacala and the whole staff, and Chris also, Stevens from, for helping out. So that's going to be great, and that's going to be at the Reagan Library, so. And besides that, did the ranking win on Super Bowl Sunday? It was a good game. Okay, and I think they broke the record, what, 100 and...
111 million, yeah.
Okay, our next item, I think we ran over to 28, is that correct? This is received and filed, recommendations from staff on the wireless telecommunication. And Dave?
Good morning, Chair Argosa, Supervisors. Mr. Powers, for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch, the Public Works Agency Transportation Director. I'm having some slides handed out. They're primarily just some photographs to give you some illustration of what we're talking about here. As the letter before you indicates, I'm here to provide information regarding an increase we've had in applications for encroachment permits for wireless treatment, wireless telecommunication facilities in the road right-of-way. For wireless telecommunication facilities, encroachment permits are ministerial in nature and are nondiscretionary. Unless there's a concern that the proposed construction would impact public access or public safety in the road right-of-way, the Transportation Department is obligated to approve the permit applications. Currently, we have no ordinance policy or regulation regarding wireless telecommunication facilities in the road right-of-way. However, several California counties and cities recently have approved ordinances for these specific situations, San Diego, San Francisco, Glendale, Calabasas, and some others. Again, our requests have increased in the last, in a very short period of time. Between 2006 and October 2011, we processed one permit for a wireless telecommunications facility in the road right-of-way. Since October of last year, I've received six permits. I'm going to show you the Verizon ones as an example, but they're essentially similar types of facilities for all of them. Again, the permit requests we've had since October, two from Verizon, two from Next G, and two from AT&amp;T. And in fact, the AT&amp;T ones came in after I filed this board letter. That's why you don't see them in the board letters. They came in right at the end of January. The Verizon applications we got originally in October were incomplete. We submitted them back to them. They provided us some updated information, and now we're, we have them for processing. The first location as an example I'll show you is here on Canaan Road, and you can see here, and I'll show you some actual photographs of, let's see if I can do this right here. You can see the location on Canaan that's there. What they're proposing to do here is replace an existing, essentially 29 and 1/2-foot octagonal concrete pole with a, just a round pole that's larger in diameter, but essentially the same height, and place a two-foot diameter, a five-and-a-half-foot tall antenna on top of that pole. In addition, what you won't see, but is very significant, is an underground temperature-controlled vault that's 25 feet long, 7 feet wide, and 19 feet deep. And in that, they will, they will put equipment and cabling as well, and there's an additional splice vault and a pedestal that go along with that. The existing pole that you see is here, and the proposed installation is what you see there. And this is obviously an artist treatment, it hasn't been done yet, but you can see the pole is larger in diameter and the antenna is sitting on top of that pole. The second location is on Santa Rosa Road, just to the northwest of, or excuse me, northeast of Andalusia or Villa Royal. This particular installation is replacing a 35-foot wood pole, which you see in the left in both photographs there, and placing a six-panel antenna on it and again, installing a temperature-controlled vault that's 25 feet wide, 7 feet, 25 feet long, 7 feet wide, and 19 feet deep. And again, this will look like that when it's improved.
Underground?
The vault is underground, yes. And that's what it will look like when, when it is installed. So again, the other applications are similar in nature. Upon completion of their review, the permits will be approved unless I can identify a situation where there's, where there is a significant issue with public use of the right-of-way or public safety. So any questions?
That's, you know, it's great, better cell phone service, all that's going to be good. What has happened with, you know, you saw that one that all of a sudden goes to its regular light pole, and then all of a sudden, it's got all this. Are you going to end up with people complaining at you about that?
That is a potential concern, and part of the reason I'm bringing this to your board this morning is, these are, again, ministerial permits that I, we will have to approve. However, because there's been such an increase in them, what we're seeing, I think, in the state is, and as the board letter indicates, there's, there's been a number of these issues going on throughout the state. There's yet been any state court rulings on what is allowed and not allowed in the road right-of-way. Through the Public Utilities Code, there's, there's requirements that we have that those are utilities in the road right-of-way, and so we're pretty much obliged to allow them to put in what they want to put in, unless we have a local ordinance or some policy that restricts that.
Yeah, I mean, they look better than they used to look, and they're getting streamlined, but they do look better, yeah.
Dave, don't most of them look like, or you can dress them like a palm tree or a tree or...
The ones that you see that are that way are not in the road right-of-way, and those are things that because we have some policies throughout the county, that we can enact that. Right now, there is nothing in the road right-of-way that I'm allowed to have them do. I can't impose anything like that at this time.
And I would just say that I'm very glad that you brought this forward. I think we do need to be proactive on this. I know that we've been looking in the Oak Park area at a need to upgrade our guidelines for cell towers. And for example, in Ojai, they do have an upgraded plan for what they want to see when they are going to put cell towers in. And so the planning department is currently working on putting together those guidelines. So I would encourage that coordination between the two departments. But as this goes, just looking at the photos, and I appreciate that you presented them, the one in Santa Rosa Valley, you can see that it does have screening because there's trees around it. The one in Oak Park, to me, kind of stands out like a sore thumb, and I don't think that would be supported in the community. So I would ask what we can do in terms of perhaps holding off on granting these, a moratorium until we can establish guidelines, so we don't have things sticking out like sore thumbs that are going to just, you know, upset the community.
We are required to expeditiously process these permits. We have, I believe, 150 days to process them. So at this time, and that clock started from when I got the permits.
Right.
That's why my desire to get this to the board in a relatively rapid manner. So at this point, with, with those permits, there's not a lot I can do with those existing, those current permits.
Right, and I appreciate that, and that's why I'm stepping over, kind of, I realize we have a process in place, but if there's something we can do to hold off, and I know that other communities have been able to put moratoriums on until they have guidelines established, and then you can open the door again and make sure that they follow the guidelines. So I'd ask our county council if we have that option available to us.
Supervisor Parks, as Mr. Fleisch has pointed out, the FCC has imposed what's called a shot clock rule, which says that in installations that are considered not co-location define as...
A substantial increase in size above 10%. We have up to 150 days, which they determine to be a reasonable period of time in which to approve these permits. We don't have any discretion to deny them. Now, I do want to say that, Dave, are all of these applications complete?
Now they are, yes. The ones from Verizon originally were not, and again, we submitted them back to them in October, and they submitted them to us the 13th of January, and we believe that they're complete.
So we have a timeline in this, as mandated?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, 150 days from the time that the applications are complete.
By doing some type of way to slow it down to improve what it looks like? Are we discriminatory, because that's a easement for utilities, and then we would be stopping all utilities if we had that, or can you pick and choose utilities?
Actually, this was a determination that was made by the California Public Utilities Commission by general order. They determined that these permit applications are nondiscretionary and ministerial.
So it doesn't matter if it's, if it's electrical, if it's cell tower, it doesn't matter at all? It's all, it's all the same, they all have to go, be treated the same?
Yes, except with cell towers, it's governed by the federal statute. It's called the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, which imposes the reasonableness time requirement.
So besides us locally, statewide, then you have to go through the federal situation because that's a federal issue.
Yes.
A couple of the questions that I would have is, it is not a discretionary permit. I understand there is a timeframe. Does it preclude us from, in the future, making these discretionary permits if we can stay within the timeframe? As see our council is discussing.
I believe it does, but what we can do, that several, again, several cities and counties have enacted specifically in the road right-of-way ordinances relating to wireless telecommunications facilities that prescribe, and we have time, place, and manner prescription that we can do, but with respect to aesthetics, we can, if we had an ordinance or some policy, we could have, you know, we could use that to do exactly what you're saying, but right now, we have none.
You know, and I do support this technology. I think this is a lot better. You can have very smaller antennas than having the huge ones that really stick out. So, but we can do it in a better way than just like the one in Oak Park, which I think is going to be a problem. I know that the cell companies have been very cooperative in working with the community, and so I would ask particularly that one, that we go and back to them and ask if we can find another location. The nice thing about this technology is just about any pole on a street works. So this one doesn't have any kind of vegetative screening or anything, it just sticks right out there. And I think when we go and look at guidelines, that's one of the things that our guidelines probably will say is, you know, put it in an area where you can, that doesn't, that has some kind of screening, really, so it doesn't stick out like this.
We have talked to Verizon initially when these came in, and they were not very receptive to the suggestion, but we could certainly go back to them again and see if there's an alternative location for this particular antenna.
Okay, and I'd be happy to work with them, too, out of my office, on this particular one that's before us. But I am concerned about not having guidelines, so I appreciate you bringing this forward and would ask that we expedite that and work closely with the planning department, too, who are putting together guidelines. I mean, I was going to come forward and ask that we do this for Oak Park specifically, but it was told, well, we're working on the guidelines anyway, and now we're at that point, but, you know, a couple are slipping through the cracks. So I'll work with the cell provider, too, and see if we can at least work to see that we don't put in a sore thumb right in the middle of the community.
Right. I've also spoken with, with, several times with Kim Pearlheart and Planning, and I'm aware of what they're looking at doing, and we are trying to make sure that we are coordinating with them.
Supervisor Foy.
Are the guidelines you're talking about, are they just aesthetics guidelines? Is that all it is, or what?
Each of the ordinances that we've seen from the different cities and counties vary. Some of them are very restrictive about location, some are aesthetic, but predominantly, they are aesthetic, and they're different based upon if it's a historic zone or not a historic zone or where they are, so.
I mean, I agree with you, Supervisor Parks, in the sense that we like, we like technology, we want to do this, I mean, the right thing. We don't want to be in a position, people screaming, oh, yo, I hear that, no cell service here. So we want to be careful we don't limit what we're trying to all accomplish, in the sense, but try to find, if there is a way to get it off this inner street, that's probably a better thing to do, so. Okay.
Any other questions? We have...
I would just ask, what direction, hearing this discussion, can we give to staff that might help us in this, Mr. CEO or county council?
Well, I was just going to suggest, there's a recommendation, actually, at the end of the letter, to direct staff to return with proposed regulations for wireless telecommunications facilities in county rights of way.
And bring it up, then.
And to direct staff to come back with a draft, those draft guidelines.
And I would just, I guess I would just tack on to that, that we'd like to have it as soon as possible, because these applications are going to continue coming through, and once they're in and completed, we have little discretion.
How much time do we have left, Dave?
Again, the shot clock is 150 days, so that's roughly about four months, and we've had the, some of these applications since October, one of them. The one in particular, we just got back completed in mid-January, so we've got a few months. Because we already have these, and I'll defer to county council, but I don't think if we apply a regulation now, since we've already had the ordinance, I think it would be problematic to try to retroactively do that.
Mr. Powers says, go ahead.
Mr. Fleisch, I think that's a very astute observation. I think we might run into that problem.
Okay.
I would think that we should have minimally language in there that says that there must be notification to the community and engagement by the community. These things just become lightning rods for concern.
Even still, I think it's wonderful to have the input, but if we can't do anything about that input, it's pretty frustrating.
Yeah, I understand.
So I do encourage, if we can get back, you know, I don't know what your timeframe is in the next couple of months, so if another application comes in, we may be able to have guidelines established before that one is complete.
So you'll bring it back then, too?
Can I just ask one more question? When you asked them to maybe reconsider, do something else, what was their reasoning?
Well, we didn't go into a specific discussion about move it somewhere else, but we said we had some, we believed we had some issues with this, we wanted to bring it to the board, and they were very insistent that we have a timeline, we have to meet. And there's actually two, it's either 90 days or 150 days, 90 if it's a co-location. They believe this is a co-location because it's in an existing location, but in reading and help and assistance with the county council, we believe it's not, and therefore, that gives us an extra two months, and that's the approach that we will take.
Okay, okay. So they gave the reason why they needed it there versus on the side of the streets of...
Again, we did not address specifically the technical reasons for it being there.
Okay. Any other questions for, you got to, I'll go in second. Vote. Okay, that's approved unanimously. Item 29, Mr. Bennett, Supervisor Bennett, policy matters.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'd like to request that we should, like, let everyone, whoever wants to say something.
Okay. It's approved unanimously, and item 30, Supervisor Foy.
Yeah.
Would like to ask that we appoint Denise Nielsen and McCann Nielsen, and I want to thank Supervisor Parks. These are people from her district, they're very nice, nice people, and they want to do it their mother and son, and they're very excited to be part of this, and they have some experience with the mental health issues, so I'd like to appoint these people.
Thank you, Supervisor Foy. They'll be a great addition, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Another one, please, she's on there, right?
Um, yeah. Yes, and also...
This will be our second parent-child on the...
Right, that's good. And also Andy Waters on there, taking the place of his father, who's very ill right now, so I'd like to appoint him, too. Thank you.
Supervisor Zaragoza? If I could, I forgot to do my adjournment memory during my board comments. I'd just like to ask us to adjourn our memory. The people on this list can call out James Dubois, longtime Ventura resident, World War II veteran, survived by a wife of 62 years, Loretta, and sons Kurt, Doug, daughter-in-law Linda Kelly, grandson Billy, real prominent people in Ventura, and so we're going to miss them a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, sure. Okay, item 31, I have brought up, you know, the recommendations to the Board of Supervisors' schedule, and one of the main reasons that I, we've talked about the schedule, put the schedule together is to make sure that we address, you know, the people's right to come before the Board of Supervisors to address their concerns and questions, and also to help our agencies and directors with their agenda items. One of the concerns that I have is if we limit the public comment's ability to ask questions and issues, you know, we might not hear from the public as we should. And also, the other concerns that I had, the reason I put this schedule together is because we will probably have a number of meetings regarding hearings from vendors, and also public safety issues and public health issues, and other important issues that are important that should be before the Board of Supervisors. So that's why I proposed the current schedule that we have, and attached for the Board of Supervisors to review, but however, however, we can always adjust those schedules. If we have to add or reschedule any board meetings, you know, we're, I'm bringing this before the board, too, for your approval, or changes, or recommendations. But one of the concerns that I had is, of course, that we do serve the public and make sure that the public's heard, and make sure that we hear their concerns, and also to assist, you know, our agencies and our directors to get their agendas on the board. So this is what I have, so if there's any suggestions...
Can I have a question? Can I make one? I appreciate that, Supervisor, and I think if we look at, over the historic time, we see very few people coming, but we also want to make sure that people do have the ability to come before the board. We have almost 40 meetings, 40-plus meetings a year, and I think we have the opportunity. Our meetings have been shrunk. We see a lot of things happening in our economy, that we have a lot less things come before the board. Even today's another short meeting. We've been gone for a couple weeks, and we're going to have another short meeting. There's just not as much going on, and I think we have the opportunity to provide some, like other counties, Supervisor Long and I, it was last year, we saw the chairman of the board from Santa Barbara here, and she was saying that they've moved to three meetings a week, and in fact, gave her the opportunity to go to a month, I'm sorry, a month, three meetings a week, a month to be here, and, no, Roberta, we're not going to look at that. The opportunity to go out and around and spend one more time understanding what other boards do. But I also think there's no question that if we look at the opportunity, as I would propose, three meetings a month, which would only cut back four meetings during the whole year, and I have a calendar here I'd like to pass out to everybody, and I circled the ones, and I appreciate Roberta helping with this, and you can see, and she did a tremendous job helping through this, which means we don't have any two weeks in a row, it's just, it would be usually the third meeting of the month, which only, which just allows a little bit of a gap, and also helps the other departments have a little bit of a free time to do some additional work, and at the same time, maybe bring some more of the issues together. All of a sudden, you know, we see Dr. Bob sitting out here, and he's got two or three issues, and then next week, he's got one issue. Here, he'd have them maybe together, and we'd have a lot more opportunity for more of the condensed work. Yes, our meetings may be a little bit longer, but I think that we would be in a situation that we'd be a little bit more practical with people's time and give them the opportunity to have a little bit more free time. At the same time, Supervisor Zaragoza, with your situation of giving people the ability to come up and speak, we're still going to have 37, 40 meetings. We'd still have an awful lot of meetings for people to be here, and I think it's an opportunity for us to find additional things that I would say also adds savings, and we're always trying to find additional opportunities to save, and it does cost us money to be here. There's no question. It costs us all the people that are here, it costs us money, and it's an opportunity for us. So I'd propose that we look at this, as you can see the circle, it's just those four meetings would be the only difference we'd talk about in the whole year.
Well, again, you know, as I mentioned before, you know, my concern is more to, you know, allow the public to have the opportunity to come and ask questions and share their concerns, and I, one of the things that I believe, and I believed for many years, is the fact that the more visible we are, and the more opportunity we give the public, you know, the more opportunity they have to, or we can listen to them to see, to listen to their concerns.
I know this issue came up last year also. I was not supportive of it last year. I think back to our meeting that we just had that went late, I just think that's partially because we were coming off holidays and things had gotten jammed up, and I think that this just increases our chances of having that happen. Things will start to pop. This doesn't take into account, we may have a short meeting now, but doesn't take into account the lengthy closed sessions that we go through, and as we have pension reform and contract negotiations, we have sometimes had to spend considerable time in closed session, many, many hours, and I know, you guys know, I've not wanted to rush closed session discussions because so much money is involved and so much critical policy. So I would not be supportive of decreasing. I think that, I think there's a public expectation here for us, and so I think that's a proposal.
I'm not sure that public and the idea that, and there's nothing wrong with us working eight-hour days, long days. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. That's what we're here to do. I think the public, as other counties have gone to that idea, even larger counties, I think, Mike, you, we've seen, as San Diego, some of the big counties have gone to that idea, is we've got to find ways to be effective and more efficient. And going back to you, Supervisor Zaragoza, you make yourself available a lot, and there's the opportunity during those days to even be available for people who need that, besides what they're coming here for the public.
One of the things I was thinking is that if we adopt my schedule, that if we need to, we can always, you know, reschedule a meeting if that, if you don't have sufficient...
The only problem you have with that is that if somebody gets our future schedule and they're saying, okay, well, there's a meeting, I'll put it on, and then all of a sudden, there's only one or two things, that's why you end up with short meetings, but if it wasn't there, they'd say, I'll do this. And then if there is a need, one of the things that we did leave in there, as you see, because going back to Supervisor, with question regarding, we have a lot of stuff, is during June, we have budgets and everything else, we've left that extra meeting there because we need that extra time to do that kind of thing. I'd hate to see us not. And I do agree that closed session, and I have no problem with the idea that we, long closed sessions, we don't want to rush anything, but it doesn't mean that we can't not put a meeting. If we have something coming up, we can't say we're going to open a special meeting just for closed session, come and open and do that. I just want to be careful to the rest of our people that are here, and all the work that they do to have to be here during these times, and remember, there's a lot of people that sit out there, sit in the green room, waiting for us, and then they come back, so there's no question, so I go back to my office, or I go back and I leave. It's a little bit easier if people are here, but what about all the people coming from different parts of the county to be here, in different parts of the city? So I think we have an opportunity, as other counties are starting to do the same thing, we have the opportunity, and you, you know, you see also, even Supervisor Zaragoza, you sat on City Council, where people met twice a month, and were able to still get that done.
Yeah, and Offshard, we met, it was a weekly thing.
Yeah, but you're seeing more people do that. So anyway, I think we have an opportunity, if I would, you know, propose...
And we did have a lot of concerns at the time, that we were not meeting enough, you know, to hear the public's concerns, and I think what we have here is the opportunity that executives meet prior to setting up the agendas, that if we adopt the schedule, that if we have an agenda that's maybe not sufficient, we can always reschedule it with three, four, or five days of timing, so we can allow our agencies and our directors to reset their agendas. Is Michael, would you guys meet on, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you meet three, four, or five days before the agenda's put together? Is that the way it works?
Politics here. Well, actually, there's quite a bit of work done in the weeks before then.
Before then?
Yeah, two, three, four weeks.
Twenty-one days. How many?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days. Again, you know, I just, my biggest concern is that we allow the public to have the most opportunity to address us, and then again, the, there's land use hearings, you know, there's vendor hearings, there, I don't want to delay anybody's business by not having enough time to address us. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I appreciate Supervisor Foy's desire to, you know, be more efficient in terms of do we have to meet as often as we do? And when I look at the schedule, between March and April, there's 12 meetings in a row, right? Four, one, two, three, four, eight, nine, 10. Yeah, between March, April, and May, there's 12 meetings in a row without a break. So being that April 3rd is my 30th anniversary, I'd like to...
Very good.
And then we'll have a break in between those. So that would be my request, to take April 3rd.
And it's interesting, and you look at our future, you look at our future county, all of April, all of May, we have nothing on there.
Right.
And so, and this would be an opportunity for the departments to look and say, oh, we had one or two of these meetings out, would I put it so I can be a more effective meeting? So, I mean, I agree, there is the opportunity out there. There's not as much...
Yeah.
And I think the CEO's office over the years, even with Murray Robinson, when they took and more moved the larger grants under $100,000 to the departments to take care of that themselves, we cut back, a lot of the things that are on our, I mean, we've done a lot of that, and I think we have the opportunity to do it. But if I can only get that, Supervisor Parks, I'll take it.
Yeah, actually, it's 13 meetings in a row without a break.
Yeah, I mean, there's no question, that's a lot.
Between the end of February to the beginning, to the end of May, there's 13 meetings in a row without a break. So I would just ask that we take April 3rd off, it's right in the front row.
Who else has an issue out there?
Mr. Chair, I might, well, I appreciate that your willingness to take a look at this, and I know that Supervisor Foy has been looking at this for a while. I think it really is agenda management, and I think it's the role of the chair of the board and the CEO to look at that, and when you look at an advanced calendar, even though it looks like there's nothing going on, you know there is. I mean, there are contracts that have to roll forward, and I think in looking at the efficiency side of it, to look at with the departments, you know, typically, contracts are going to roll forward in a period of time, and, you know, the, when, usually, we have this last-minute rush for the new year, the new fiscal year. So, you know, we have perhaps a heavier calendar, then we get enough advanced calendar notice here when it comes to land use or policy issues that we know are going to engage the public and require more time. I would say that with the work that you've done already, Supervisor's Chair, that to move ahead with your recommended calendar, always with the eye with the CEO to look for in advance to say, well, you know, we don't have anything that's critical on this timeline, so it's easier to meet, I think, to remove one than to add one. And I appreciate that, you know, there may be some public members who will look at this and go to it and say, you know, well, I can count that there's a meeting here. I think that might be rare, but...
And I think the CEO, you know, Supervisor is right, you can, if we see that the agenda is really light, we can, you know, reschedule it and not have that meet.
I'd go ahead and make the motion to adopt the calendar and take April 3rd off.
I'll go along with that one.
There you go. One more.
Take one more.
One more. And I can support that.
Okay, you want a second?
Could April 3rd off?
I think there's a first and a second here.
I'll take the second. Appreciate it, thanks.
Is that your birthday?
Her anniversary.
Thirty is her anniversary.
Alrighty. Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody votes, sorry.
Yeah, Supervisor Zaragoza, you're moving this meeting ahead quickly, so.
Okay. You got correspondence? I'll make a note. Okay, then our next item is correspondence items, 32 through 40. Okay, that's approved, and then we go to closed session. Do we have any announcements after closed session?
We should not have any announcements.
And we should be back in, what, about 20 minutes or so?
About 10 o'clock.
Thank you. Okay, we're back in session with item 18, discuss and file the report investment for the county. Your Honor?
Supervisor Zaragoza, thank you, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm honored to be, I am Stephen Hance, Ventura County's treasurer, tax collector. Really, I think we should make the sign rather larger.
What would you rather be, would you rather be called the tax collector or the judge?
Or judge.
Yeah, I can imagine.
I tell my staff to answer the telephone judge because it confuses the callers, and many of them hang up, and it works out.
Especially if they owe money him.
Yeah. I'm honored today to be able to present the report of investments for the monthly period ending 31 December 2011. In very brief summary, the report tells you that the reported balance is $2 billion. The yield is .72 percent in the average days to maturity is 372 days. A very similar report to the one that you received last month. And I will tell you that the report you receive in March will be very similar. Today, the balance is 1.8 billion, which reflects, among other, small withdrawals and earnings apportionment. At the yield, as of January 31st, is .67 percent, and the average days to maturity is 371 days. So things will stay about the same. The fund will go down in value slightly as withdrawals are made, and then it will increase dramatically, I suppose one would say, in April, when the spring, when the second installment is due. The fund is 87 percent in U.S. government instruments, 10 percent in commercial paper, and 3 percent in the California State Local Agency Investment Fund. Those percentages will remain approximately the same for the report you receive early in March. However, if you look at the page of the investment letter, which details December's transactions, all of which were purchases, you'll see that the yields continue to decline on the types of purchases that we make, especially since we are close to the limit in the investment policy on average days to maturity. Short-term rates have virtually nowhere to go, and we are, as we continue to buy instruments of one year or less, we continue to approach that low yield. Every now and then, Mr. Hanson is able to score a better-than-average yield on a particular purchase, but overall, his prediction is that the rate will continue to decline. Because of that, he and I have discussed for several months, since October, actually, other potential investments with extremely limited risk and somewhat better yield. And we have done our due diligence with the assistance of the investment team in examining those other investments. And last week, Mr. Hanson and I agreed to implicate, implement, thank you, a limited program of purchasing medium-term corporate notes, as described on page five of the investment policy. The policy allows up to 5 percent of the portfolio to be in corporate notes with a maturity date of 24 months or less. We've established a list of acceptable corporate issues, as we did with setting up a list of acceptable issues, issuers of commercial paper. The 14 issuers are all rated A or better by both Moody's and by Standard and Poor's, and the average rating is A, A2 by Moody's, and double A by Standard and Poor's.
You know, I was going to mention that, you know, that safety and liquidity of the county's funds is so important with the, with those ratings that we receive from Standard and Poor's.
We are, we are led to believe that this program will not impact the Standard and Poor's rating of the county's investments. In fact, that was a significant factor in whether to decide to go ahead with this. And the, in terms of the liquidity issue, I do not expect that we're going to buy anything that has a maturity date of more than one year. That's the instructions that we've given to Mr. Hanson's brokers, is to stay under one year, and partly, that's ruled by the average days to maturity number, which we are right on, and.
That's extremely important to all of us.
The, we can afford to be choosy on these, and we are not rushing to buy the whole 5 percent this week. We've made four transactions since the 1st of February, all with a maturity date of less than one year, and all of which, each of which, all of which, on average, will yield about 45 basis points, which is to say about twice the yield of commercial paper or government instruments with a similar maturity. We intend to be very cautious about this, and of course, the investment policy requires caution on this, and we expect to go along those lines. The first written report that you will receive that will actually detail these investments will come to you early in April, because we started in February.
Excuse me, Judge, have you identified for us the list of the 14 companies that have qualified?
Yes, I don't suppose that the fact that we've put them on our list will make that much difference in their stock prices. Berkshire Hathaway, Barclays, Bank of New York Mellon, Coca-Cola, Colgate Palmolive, General Electric, which issues two types of corporate notes that we will be looking at, IBM, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Microsoft, Morgan Stanley, Procter &amp; Gamble, Toyota Motor Credit, Walmart, and interestingly enough, Yale University.
Thank you, Judge.
That's the approved list.
And that, you're going to make that list available to us?
I certainly shall.
Thank you.
We, would you also like an updated list of the commercial paper issuers, so that you can see which, which?
Yes, sure.
That too. And of course, when I report, when Mr. Hanson or I report in March, we will be pleased to give you an informal update on the progress on that, on the corporate note issuance, so that you are not in the dark until you get an actual written report in April. Please, if I may, answer any questions.
Is there any questions, Senator? Yeah, I did. Supervisor? One other question I heard recently about the amount of collateral backing up the home loan banks, and the real concern being expressed about the amount of collateral they have backing up the home loan banks. And I would appreciate if your office could provide for us whatever information you can obtain identifying the amount of collateral backing up the home loan banks at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
I know they're backed by the government, but there was a concern really expressed about how small the amount of collateral that's relative to their liabilities.
It's been discussed, and it's one of those things that Mr. Hanson and I have said informally is that if those fail, we might as all, well, all turn to a different line of work anyway. But yes, I will certainly provide whatever.
To the extent that there is a problem, and we're aware of it, if there is any other government.
Yes, sir.
Entity that we could move to.
It might take more time than it will take to provide you the list of.
Sure, I understand.
Approved issuers.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have first and a second. Thank you, and this approved. And item 19, receiving and filing the presentation by HSA, Barry.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers, I'm Barry Zimmerman. I'm here with Mike Pettit, the CIO of the county, and this is kind of a joint presentation, kind of to communicate on a project that we have completed within the agency known as an ECM, our ECM project, and we've talked about that a little bit here and there. But ECM refers to, you know, Electronic Case Management System. And today, this is an opportunity to go over that with you, and kind of to highlight what we did in coming about to get that project going, as well as what the project did for the agency. Now, I'm going to state outright, I'm probably not going to do justice to the impact that this really had on our agency and on the workers, and what it did in changing the entire way we do business. It's hard to express in a few words in this show, but this was a monumental change in our entire organization. About three-quarters of our entire staff and operation were impacted by this project. And the way they do their job, and the way they, our facilities are laid out, and everything, you would think, just conceptually, oh, you're just taking, going from a paper product to an electronic product, that's easy to do, but there's a lot of little things that needed to be considered and to go over. Also, today, we have in the audience, we have a few of, we have Melissa, and Patty, and Martha, they're all team members and project leads, and our project manager there that were instrumental in the success of this project. We'd like to recognize them, and many others that aren't here, that are busy in their offices, that were instrumental in making this a successful.
They're working very.
Yes, a successful journey. In a nutshell, ECM, what it did for us, it created a service delivery system that allowed services to be done with no wrong door, that individuals could be served wherever they were in the county, regardless of originating office, location of residence, or anything to that effect. Now, they can go into any location that we have throughout the county and be able to receive full services and full delivery of the benefits that they're entitled to. For example, we did give this, and this illustrates the point that we got from a worker in the East County, went through this situation, a CalFresh client went into the Oxnard office, and CalFresh has to report on a regular basis documentation income to maintain eligibility. And this individual submitted some documentation, but it was late and past the deadline, and so her benefits were discontinued there. So, as, which would be appropriate, would call and check on the status of, that they were discontinued and wanted to know why. This particular client called in and is, submitted the documents in Oxnard, called in and received, a worker picked up the call who was doing customer service that day in East County. So Esther Olid was the eligibility worker in East County that picked up the call to address this individual and asked what the case and the situation was. They described the situation, she was able then electronically in the ECM system to pull up the entire case, the documentation that was submitted in the Oxnard office, and process the case and resolve the eligibility issue right there. Prior to having this system in place, it would have been referred back to the Oxnard office to find the specific assigned caseworker, and then, if the documents had have been routed to the desk at that point, to run down the documents in the system in order to process that case, and that could have delayed probably at least a day or so in order to affect that service. So that's in essence what the ECM system does, is bridge the ability to do work, no matter who is servicing the client. So, part of the strategy also is to address the growing demands on our system. If you see from now, these are all the program areas in which the ECM system will touch or be serviced through an electronic format. So in 2006, our ratio of service was about 1 to 10 in the population, now we're about to 1 to 7, so the demand in volume of work has increased over time. So the benefits we're looking for are faster access to information, reduction in lost documents, a reduction in handling and storage costs, and security and integrity of the data was also an important factor. So the business case was laid out in order to find a solution in order to meet those objectives of standardizing our processes, capitalizing on technology, and increasing our productivity in the workforce. The ECM structure was also, put in play, we got a lot of people coming here, I'll hustle The ECM platform was really a business strategy in order to set us up to do other things within our environment of service delivery, such as doing a distributed call center, where we didn't have to set up a central location, that we can now route electronically calls throughout the centers, and it will lend ourselves into developing a greater strategy to be more mobile into the community, in which we can go into community environments and service individuals there. But in order for this to be a successful project, we very much had to team up with IT services and work with them in fulfilling the future, and they were instrumental in helping us come up with these solutions and develop the product that would be appropriate for us and for the county as a whole. And I'd like Mike to talk a little bit about that.
Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the board. Just real, CEO Powers, Mike Pettit, CIO, just real quickly, want to emphasize teamwork and partnership here. It seems only fitting, we just came off the Super Bowl, I want to share with you a quote from Vince Lombardi, very successful coach, and it goes like this, "Individual commitment to a group effort, that is what makes a team work, a company work, a society work, and a civilization work." And that's what we saw here with this project. The partnership between HSA, all of its employees, the individual commitment from the very top of the organization to every single worker in the organization, and to IT services and our folks. This project has been a huge success on a number of aspects. One, in enabling the business, and that's really the key goal of the technology, but two, leveraging an existing platform that we have in ECM, reducing the amount of paper, a green initiative, and also lowering the total cost.
Michael, and the reduction of papers, you said 6.2 million pieces of papers, which you?
Actually, more than that. We now currently, HSA brought in about 9.1 million.
9.1 million pieces of paper.
And annually, they're expected to add an additional 3.6 million. I don't want to steal too much thunder from the rest of the presentation.
That's a lot of trees, huh?
We've talked about that before, you know, a two-mile-high stack of paper, so very tremendous accomplishment. But also, in leveraging this platform, it's helped reduce the overall operating costs to the county. So that's some of the benefit that teamwork and partnership has yielded here at the county. We talked about this on a few. We talked about this on a few previous presentations to the board, and that's one of the things that's made Ventura County so successful is when we partner on projects, we've talked about the property tax project that's coming up. Supervisor Long, you mentioned the Visigis project and how tremendous that's been for the county. And there's a number of these examples, the new EMR project that HCA is doing. The partnership here at Ventura County is tremendous. It's noted and it's recognized by many other counties that come here to see what we're doing. And so that can't be underemphasized in how successful that has made the county and the benefit to the citizens. It is good government, it's part of our strategic plan, and it's really generated some tremendous successes in this case. So I'm pleased to be a part of that and the achievement that HSA has accomplished. And I'll turn it back over to Barry now.
Just to give you an overview of what had to go into play, and this was really in a cooperative effort with IT services and our program folks in order to accomplish this. This was not a project that was done in a 12-month period. This took quite a time period to put into play. So the original thought started in around 2007 was to initiate an effort like this to go electronic, to go paperless. And so the initial efforts was to take a pilot and to do it on a small level. And so we picked the general relief program. And so the general relief program was the one chosen to model the type of solution that could be in play for the broader or the larger programs within the agency. That effort took place throughout 2008 and 2009. And with that, it wasn't just a matter of taking the existing system. What we wanted to do is also look at the system and reinvent the system as appropriate to make it the most effective, standardize the practices, eliminate some of the waste. We did Kaizen events around it. We did exercises to simplify the process, to also address customer interaction, their experience associated with it, to try to get all the context around it to come up with this solution. And that, it wasn't just a matter of building a computer system, it also had to deal with reinventing the way business was done. So for example, in the general relief program, we found economies in there, like eliminating 54 forms associated with the program, standardizing the practices, and coming up with a greater ability to communicate because our general relief program travels throughout the county, how they can get access remotely for that. So all that was used in preparation for the larger project for the agency as a whole. And then the same methodology was used as the agency as a whole to reinvent the business programs that we have there. So for example, some of the lean projects that we did for the agency as a whole, we took source information or what we call reductions of document sources from 13 different sources to down to three. So we had three primary sources for the documents that we have. We eliminated over 500 forms associated with the program elements and many other business changes in order to simplify the programs as we go through. Now, you probably don't appreciate, like I do, when they say they eliminate a form is a big deal in our agency. We lived for forms. And, you know, prior facilities management, when we go into facilities, one of the big areas was always discussed, where would the form room, the forms room be placed? Because it was such an integral part of the operation to manage these forms. And so to eliminate 500 or to reduce duplicate forms in the hundreds is a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment in of itself. So the project team was set up like this, and I think this was instrumental for the success of the project when we're dealing with so many multiple parts and different facets. Because we're touching programs from Medi-Cal, CalFresh, to CalWorks, to children's, to long-term care, you know, so it's quite, it's, you know, going across the agency in all program areas to, that impacted every department. So we had a steering committee that was set up to kind of oversee the policy. And then what was instrumental was our subcommittees there, a technical team that was headed by Patty Sanchez, a program team, which would be all the program and business operations by Paul Pujol, and then our ECM and hardware, basically the hardware, infrastructure, technology, and facilities was Art Semery and Rich Berman, who did our facilities associated with that. And at first, you didn't realize how much that would change on, you know, on figuring out where scanners should be placed, how new, you know, where, what would we do with the new flow of information coming in, how we would design an office differently and so forth, because we didn't need all this capacity for files or centralized the workers around access to files. It was more now a computer-based structure. So it had a lot of components to it. One of the main elements was that we had to deal with change management. And these are some of the deliverables and areas that we had to accomplish within the changing this environment. And I say, one of the largest components that gave a great value was communications throughout the organization and communicating what was happening. And so I brought, this is one example, this was the flyers then posted out into the offices that was done in order announcing that ECM is coming. And so, you know, we had a go-live date of Halloween, and so everyone could remember that date very well, you know. And so it was communicated out there. And once we started involving the communications network out into the community, because we're talking that this will impact close to, we have 725 users on the system. So that's three quarters of our organization would be impacted. And so communicating and getting them, understanding what was heading, the trainings, the feedback that needed to generate in order to effectively roll it out was very important. And so as we put these out, then people had the opportunity to go onto our internet, onto a blog site. We had postings where they could say, hey, did you think of this? Or I didn't see this, or through the training, I needed more information on that. And we were able to respond, which was very much a credit to the leaders of those teams.
So the public is really working with you on this?
Not so much public, it was internal at this point in time.
But then how do we get it to the public in the future? How do we, is that's another phase?
Yeah, that will be our next phase, as we now can go out into community centers and perform services there. And so we'll be now interacting with what customer needs are. And so, and we're really looking into and assessing, we've done surveys already into the voice of the customer type of approach to say, how would their experience be and what is their expectation of us?
So this is all internal and then ultimately it's going to be?
This gives us the platform to do that now, and we can go into areas where people may have less mobility and what we're thinking is more the ages, those that are homebound, theoretically could do that. We just need to figure out now a cost-effective way to do a one-on-one service and to look at that. So in a diagram, this is what it looks like, our system, we're taking many documents now. We scan them into the computer system, and then it gets stored in electronic storage format there. So what that means is here, here's a typical case file, okay? And you'll see a picture of, we have a picture of the old case files all lined up for you. But this is very clean, actually, they put it together. And so this is a typical case file that you'd work on it. And if you notice, it says volume one. So that indicates there's probably going to be a volume two, three, and four, and they grow in that. And they get volumed, and then the volumes get shipped off to storage. But if something happens, an audit or everything, we have to call those volumes back. And so that was a very costly activity. If there's an appeal, if there's a question, all those have to be there. And on average, we spent on upwards of $200,000 to $250,000 a year just managing file movement. And so that was an immediate savings by going electronic in that format there. So that's plus staff time and other aspects of it. So this was a typical case file here. What this represents is 170 images, just in this file here. So that's quite a bit of documentation with it. What they did with the system, if you notice, some of these are state forms and required by law to have in here, and they're tabbed. And I just wanted to show, like we have a release form here that would be showing. Well, part of this, the system isn't just a matter of scanning in a PDF document per se, like you do in a copy machine and fax it here, that the system actually recognizes this form. And we have hundreds of forms that are recognizable by the system in which it goes through, says, ah, this is this type of form. It takes the case file, the information that is relevant to that form, the name of the people, and populates them into the system so we can then easily index it and put it in the right spot. So it is very.
That's a savings.
Yeah, very intuitive that way. And then the system, if you see, the case files are built in tab format. And so the electronic system is also built in a tab format. So the E case, which is the electronic case for the worker, is similar in that if budget information would be in the budget tab. And so these are, forms are recognized and put into those, that format. Now, the worker can work electronically as if, as if they're working with a paper documentation packet. So this is a picture of a small scanner, and it's just like a little desktop printer, and just scans right through and reads into the system. We have medium-sized scanners that do volumes of papers that you've seen that look like mini copy machines is what they are. And those are the two type of scanners that we have throughout the system. I think we have, you know, 74 scanners throughout the whole, all our locations there. So this is what it does, just to give you a picture, it scans into this, which is the COFAC system, which takes it and is now going to organize that document, going to index it and put it in the right holding electronic file. So it comes in, they do some work there to make sure it's correct, in the right case number and so forth. Then, once it's in the system, now on the flip side, it's just reverse, that a worker now goes to their workstation, calls it up, looks for a case number, it goes and finds the documents, and now on the PC, the worker can have access to all these documents that once would have been in a paper format. So that's in general how it works, and obviously, there's a lot of technical, technical things that I'm not super familiar with, but that make all this work. This is just a screenshot of someone that would come in and say, I'm looking for this case, and down below, that case information would come up. They would click on it, and for example, this is a pay verification document that they would be able to pull up and say, okay, I can validate the wages, hours, or whatever information I need to glean off that and put it into the eligibility system appropriately and work the case. Or if someone calls in and says, you know, that document, something happened, and they can retrieve that document, say, I've got it right here, and know instantly what the status of the case is. So this is improving the client experience tremendously, in which now the clients can really access our system through multiple formats. And ECM is the bridge to bring this together, to be serviced anywhere throughout our system. Also allows us to shift work. We are geographically spread throughout the county, and one center may be overworked in the sense of getting a higher number of applicants coming in. We can now just assign electronically to another office that may have capacity there. And we do that now by shifting work, where prior, we used to either move the worker or package up the cases and ship them out. And so it's very effective to do that all the way through. This is just kind of some statistics that we show. We've eliminated a bunch of forms. There's 640 auto-identified forms that actually took IT, technical people to program in. And to do that, we have about 725 users. What this means is those numbers are large, 300,000 images are scanned plus a month is our pace right now. That means there's 15, over 15,000 images scanned per day is what goes through our system at this point in time. The savings there are savings based on the current activity going forward there, but we did save about, about, I think it was about $250,000 in file management costs, and we saved about $200,000 in storage costs of all these files that we had in storage that we backfiled into the system there. So around 9.6 million images at this point in time in the system that represents our current caseload. So that is pretty high. It actually was kind of a shock because our original estimate was a little bit lower than that. And so, you know, the volume of work has increased significantly. This is a picture of what would be, what would be normal, either in a hallway where we kept files, or in a smaller fashion, would be in a cubicle of someone's office.
And Barry, what happens, are we going to shred those files? Or what do we do?
Well, yeah, well, we destroyed all the files that were scanned in, either the ones we legally can destroy. And so they were all taken care of.
And then all the files are then backed up into another computer?
Yeah, they have redundancy and so forth, which helps us in our disaster recovery and also is very much a big part of the, we were under a mandate by the Social Security Administration on protection of confidential information. And this project was largely funded through that initiative of the Social Security Administration. We did receive allocated funds to build not only physical limitations within our offices, let's say doors, locked doors, those type of things, but allowed us to also do it electronically. And so a huge chunk of this project, and the project was about $2.6 million to do, I would say about 80% of that was covered through that initiative of the Social Security Administration wanting protection. In addition, it was a requirement by the state that we also do our transfers of cases from county to county electronically. And so this is not just unique to Ventura County, but all counties are moving in this fashion as this is the way business is going to be done in the future. So this is a typical, and we didn't stage that. That is, that is the way it works when they're pulling cases and working with them. And this is just an active file room. So after ECM, we had looked, ta-da, someone's cubicle, this is Nancy Viegas, the employment specialist for GR, that went, was the original pilot in this to take all her cases and put them in electronic format. So no longer does she have a file.
So Barry, the employees, we're not getting rid of employees, we're making the employees more efficient and more productive.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because the question would be, what happens to the employees if they don't have to file or store documents?
Yeah, we redirect their work. Instead of filing, now they scan and index.
They're doing additional work.
And they get this. But a worker like this, who's an employment specialist now, can meet with a client in Oxnard, pull up the case. That same client may appear in Ventura, and she may be in Ventura, and she can pull up that case.
So you have a storefront in Ventura, 1,000,000, or whatever?
Yeah, we have multiple locations there. So this is a typical format of someone sitting at their cubicle. If you notice, the part of the IT infrastructure was that we had to set up the environment to allow it to happen, which is dual monitors and these type of things. So on the left side, we have the CalWINS system, which is our eligibility system. On the right side would be the E case, or the, what would be the paper case that they would work on there. And so that's how they would work. We did survey our staff to say how they like the system. They, you know, almost three quarters of them said that this does definitely improve their ability to serve the client. So that's excellent response. We've gotten great feedback from them. I do have here, just to conclude, it's not a couple minutes long, we did get some testimonials from, from our staff to tell you what they thought of the ECM system. And I'll see if this works.
The electronic case management, it's a vehicle of empowerment for the client and for the employees. In the paper world, we were limited to what we could actually see in our hands. Now with ECM, we're able to pull up a file electronically in real time and view it and provide a much more efficient and client-friendly experience. And that really empowers the client, and it really empowers us as employees as well.
ECM requires scanners. We receive client information to be scanned into the electronic system. After scanning. After scanning, we review it to make sure it is filed into the right case section of the case. In my opinion, I have noticed a decrease of calls and complaints of clients and I attribute this to ECM.
Prior to ECM, my duties as a case aide included case setup, case volume, and case request. The most noticeable change in my duties has been the elimination of case files. Now with ECM, we're able to provide information quickly to all staff regardless of location.
With ECM, all the verifications that are provided are scanned into the system. So now all client benefit specialists have full access to any information at any given time. What would once be an agonizing task to find a client's case, now it takes us all but a few seconds. At first I thought learning ECM would be difficult. It actually ended up being really easy after training.
Before ECM, and a client would call, I would go look for the case file itself, check with the worker, have the worker check their in basket. Now with ECM and the electronic case available, everything is there. It's easier to answer the client's questions, it's easier to be able to provide them with the service they need. And so it made it easier to be able to help them in less time answering their questions.
Initially, the learning curve with ECM can seem a little daunting. It's a system that's comprised of multiple scanners and multiple software applications. However, as you start to use the different programs and also the different scanners, you see how the different pieces fit together and help make your daily processes a lot simpler. Speaking as a supervisor, I can see how completing case reviews and delegating workflow has become a lot faster and also more efficient because it's just a matter of going into the system and pulling the information that I need and delegating the task out to my staff as needed.
So that is some representation of how they view the, the system and the benefits of it. So it, it's been a monumental effort and, and a real sea change in the, the way we do work. I mean, going from a very manual process laden environment to an electronic world and virtual in some respects is quite a change and a change in perspective that the workers had to go through. So where does this take us from now? You know, where do we go from here? I think this really allows us to do multiple things, really sets the stage where we can do better workflow and automation of the workflow where, where things will become even more automated in the sense that, you know, pretty soon a, a form will go in and automatically go where it needs to go, automatically notify someone of some work that needs to be done in that fashion. It will also, in the future, allow us very much to have self-help environments in which kiosks can be set up in the community and they can, they can do it themselves. That paper doesn't necessarily have to come to our office because they can scan them there in, in self-help environments and take care of it. So a documentation such as, we take documentation as a driver's license, they, they would be able to scan that in some format remotely and just, just bring those documents to us electronically. So there, there's great promise for it in, in establishing a foundation that is now able to be leveraged into the future and into different technology solutions for better service. And that's really the, the goal that we're, we're trying to achieve here is access and service. And, and I think this, this has been wildly successful and a, and a great venture for our agency and a great partnership with the, the county IT services. I think it's answered a lot of questions that other agencies could use, you know, benefit from as far as if they're looking to, to go through, you know, going from a paper list to an automated environment, you know, we experienced a lot of that and, and can share. And I know that's housed with IT services to benefit the rest of the county. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I'll encourage you whenever you get a chance and if you're around an office, more than happy to ask workers there to show you how it works and they'll, they'll be more than happy to show you how, how the process works.
Barry and Michael, thank you so much. You know, I think this makes it more efficient, more productive and, and greener too. And I think it'll help the public in the long run. So thank you for, for an excellent presentation.
All right.
Thank you so much.
All right.
I also think just your, your staff, moving into this type of situation, they know what's out there now, they have the ability to do that and get out of paper and it's going to be great. I mean, think about it, we also as, as, looking at, as you grow and continue the needs that have to happen, we don't have to grow an office space. I mean, that is the biggest thing of this, how many of, how much space in this building alone is taken up with file cabinets and storage and everything else? That's a huge issue and people can sit at their desk and answer people. Somebody's on the phone, I can get you that information, but I'm getting up. That's ideal. I mean, this is an efficiency thing that we need to be doing. So thanks a lot for, a lot of hard work when you started back, you know, five years ago doing this. Great vision.
Big project. Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
I hope it does translate into labor savings and the number of employees at, at the appropriate time.
At the appropriate time with, I think with program simplification, there, there should be some efficiencies on there.
Michael?
Just again, congratulations to Barry and Mike and your whole departments and also, you know, you wouldn't normally pilot a program with one of the largest departments in the county. But in doing so, as Barry said, it really builds the case for other departments in the county. If HSA can do it with the magnitude of your operations and IT, any department can do it. So thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, and you, you saw it in action, I think so.
Thank you, Barry.
You know, and it does provide that convenience to our, our customer, you know, the people that need to have, be able to work even though they can't go to one office that they need to be at, that you're able to, to have that electronic filing. And as well as you look at throughout the state, I think that's a real help too. If you move, you still have your access to the records and able to continue the process. That's, it's gotta be helpful, I would think, and, and probably the intent for the, for the customer.
Very helpful, both, both for the, the client as well as the integrity of the program.
And the kiosks.
Because we have the information that's readily available.
The offsite is really important too, you know, the offsite assistance.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Motion, please, Bob?
Okay.
And our next item is a recommendation of Supervisor Bennett to recognize gift owners to children's services, auxiliary and children's and family services.
Well, I want to apologize. You, you came here for a 10-30 time certain item and we're, we've, we've held you for 25 minutes and I know many of you are busy and it's like that classic thing, if you want to get something done, ask a busy person to do it. We've, you, you have stepped up in a big way to, many of you, year after year, to help our foster children at, during the holiday season, be able to be sure that they're not forgotten. And the whole children's auxiliary program is, is just outstanding. So I'd like to ask Judy Weber to come up to the podium and she's going to help me present gift certificates to you so we can speed you back on your way. But I do want to say how much we really appreciate it. Foster children don't have much of a voice, don't get to speak often for themselves and, but we see it when we work with them. And it just, it takes a, a whole community to deal with our foster children. You've decided to play a big role and, and I just want to say thank you very much. And Judy, I'll turn it over to you as I come down.
Hi, I'm Judy Weber. I'm the Deputy Director for the Human Services Agency, Children's Family Services. Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Zaragoza and Mr. Powers. Thanks for having me here today. I'd like to first introduce David Weinreich. David is the manager for the central programs that really acts as the liaison with the Children's Services Auxiliary. So he's going to help us in passing out the certificates this morning. I'd also like to acknowledge some Children's Services Auxiliary Board members who are here today. We have Mary Kay Roth, who is the parliamentarian, Debbie Rowan, who is a member, and Letitia Ortiz, who is the treasurer. So thank you again for the opportunity. You know, with our economy, we were a little bit concerned that we wouldn't have the same donations that we had been having in years past, but I am very, very happy to report that we had very generous donations this year as well. In fact, we had, we were able to collect and distribute more than 18,000 toys to nearly 6,000 of Ventura County's neediest children. For several years now, we know that KBTA's Morning Show has sponsored a children's fund drive. And so that's hosted by Tom Spence and Stick Boy. And in 2011, the drive resulted in a donation of $36,500 to the auxiliary. So that, that's really something. In addition, the auxiliary received another $10,000 from various private partners and individuals as well. So if I could just share an example of people who have had the good fortune to work with the auxiliary for many years now. Ann Burke really is, is somebody who needs to be called out. So if you're here, Ann, can you please stand up? Oh, she wasn't able to make it? Okay. Well, I still want to say that Ann has chaired the Giving Tree at the Thousand Oaks Mall for over 20 years. She's given generously of herself to the foster care community as both a foster parent and a tireless supporter of the Children's Services Auxiliary. Unfortunately, Ann's going to be moving out of state and so she's not going to be able to continue with sponsoring that Giving Tree. It's her last year last year. And so she'll be greatly missed, but I do want to take the opportunity to thank her for her dedication over the last 20 years in making that Giving Tree such a success. So Supervisor Bennett, you're going to help me in passing these out and I'll just go through the list of individuals who are here. First I have Mary Kay Roth. We have Lois Lovins, Sharon, and Sharon Salmon from the Garden Club of the City of San Bueno Ventura. We had Ventura City Fire Engine 3 representatives here and I know they got called away to a call just a minute ago, but we do have Battalion Chief Jack Hanson here to receive his certificate. We have Captain Ron Oatman, who is the Public Information Officer, no, excuse me, and the Public Information Officer Steve Swindle from Ventura County Fire Department. Tom Spence and, let's see, Alex from KBTA Morning Show is here. Is Chief Roper here? We have a representative from Ventura County Fire Department, also a big contributor. Chief Joe Milligan and Inspector Chad Carroll from Oxnard City Fire. We have Scout, Boy Scout Troop 155, Michelle Ellis and Woody Woodward. I don't know if they're here. Let's see, Laura Fair from the Kiwanis of Kaneha Valley. Adam Pearlman, Ta'Caro Rico, and Jenna Thompson from the Outsource Group. Judy Rogers from Ventura Center for Spiritual Living. Melissa Livingston, who is a fellow deputy director from the Human Services Agency. We had an effort internal to our agency. Pam Mack and Chief Migley and Chief Lorenzen from Ventura County Fire. Diana Ockett, Janine Wasserman, and Larry Brier from the Channel Islands Figure Skating Club and Ice Center. Jane Nolan, Fire Department Management Fund. Patty Zoll, County of Ventura. Joe Cruetz from Ventura Calmer's Bank. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We're going to have a good picture. We're going to have to come together. Did we get Joe?
Oh, there he is. Hi, Joe.
Yes, good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Joe. And last but not least, Jolene McBee and Chris Frank from the Bagabon Restaurant. My sincere, sincere thanks to all of you for your generosity and dedication and support of this program. So... Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you again for, for sharing with us, you know, and being here so late. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to call Susan England, Eric, Tanya, and come on over and I'm going to read this out. I have a resolution for you for 211. This is a resolution from the Board of Supervisors proclaiming the week of February 6, 2012 as 211 Week. Whereas 211 Week is an easy to remember number that connects individuals with health, human services, and resources of Ventura County with approximately 3,200 nonprofit organizations in our county plus scores of governmental agencies. Finding help can be confusing and intimidating and whereas the county's 211 call center is staffed with trained specialists who quickly assess the caller's needs and refer them to help they seek up to date and has provided social services support to more than 1,000, oh, excuse me, 115,000 residents in Ventura in the last six years of operation. And whereas 211 makes entire network health, of health and human services function more efficiently by reducing the number of misdirected calls and reducing public frustration with the difficulties of finding help. As whereas 211 offers information on a broad range of services including earned income, tax credits, rental assistance, mortgage loan assistance, food bank, food banks, health and resources, childcare, after-school programs, elderly care, financial literacy, job training programs. And whereas 211 enhances the public safety and crisis recovery efforts, 211 is a valuable community impact partnership of Interface Children's Family Services, United Way of Ventura, the County First Five, First Five of Ventura County, the County of Ventura County, Ventura Health Care Agency, the County of Ventura Health Services Agency provided assistance to more than 20,000 residents throughout the seven of the county's 10 cities, Camarillo, Moore Park, Ojai, Oxnard, Portway-Nimi, Simi Valley, and Ventura. Without this demonstration, a partnership 211 would not exist. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pride in proclaiming the week of February 6, 2011, 2012, excuse me, as 211 Week in the County of Ventura. And this is presented on the 7th day of February 2012. Who wants to share a couple of words and I'll go down together?
Thank you, Chairman Zaragoza and the board and, and Mr. Powers. We certainly appreciate the recognition of 211 Week. Really helps to highlight what a tremendous service that 211 is in our community. And so because it's a 24/7, 24/7 service, we're going to assume that that's a long week that you've given us of recognition, 24 hours a day for seven days. So we appreciate that. We'll, we'll have a, a get-together on Friday morning to, to acknowledge the, the work that's been done over the last seven years. And I just want to mention that, as you know, Ventura County was the first one up and running with, with 211. And since then, we've been able to transition the majority of California to be covered by 211 service. And so to date, we have about 90% of the state that's covered, the state's population that's covered by 211 and about 80% of the, of the nation. So... So, so clearly Ventura County was, we, we are trendsetters. And it just would not have happened without the support from United Way, First Five, Public Health. These were the critical partners with, with Interface in, in the early days. And, and now we have a, a program that's, that's very stable and is improving day after day, getting more reliable and resilient to be able to be here for the community. So we, we really appreciate the, the highlight that you're, that you're doing for 211 for this week and hope to see you Friday morning as we celebrate together.
Bright and early.
Bright and early, 8 o'clock, yeah.
Well, thank you so much, Eric. And thank you for your good work, Tanya. And thank you for the work. Susan, all the different taxes, how much money are you giving back?
Lots.
Yeah, millions, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
A lot of hard work to get to where we are today. And that's, those are good statistics, both for the coverage in the state and the nation, Eric. So look forward to the breakfast.
You know, we have, we, we do check in with our callers to find out their satisfaction. And 96% are telling us that they would refer 211 to a friend. So, so that's really hats off to Tanya and her team for, for the tremendous work they're doing.
Thank you, Eric.
I know that you and Dave Smith have gone up and down the state, really making this happen. So appreciation for all that work.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, your say?
Eric, go, go. And maybe for Susan and Tanya as well. I just, one of the things I don't think people realize, you almost made it. The only thing people don't realize is it's 24/7, it's helping a lot of people. But the expertise that the staff at 211 have, we have a case management team at our hospital that meets every day at 11 and tries to discharge folks from the hospital. And it's a big challenge because they don't have resources. And if they don't have certain very specialized equipment, they can't go home and they might have to go to a nursing home. And that's an extra challenge. So they aren't experts at what they do. And yet sometimes they get stuck. And they, they don't know where to turn to help get these people back home somehow. And they turn to 211. And so the fact that the 211 operators are so skilled that they can help find these very specific, unique pieces of equipment and support services for these people is really extraordinary. So just thank you for the 211 staff for all they do.
And one, one more thing too, Susan, you know, it's been very instrumental in helping with EIC for low-income residents. Last year, we had, what, 1 point something million dollars, Susan, was, you know?
And this year, we're using 211 as our central appointment system. So people can call 24/7 and receive information on our vital site across the county.
So thank you for all the good work. Thank you so much. And we'll see you Friday morning.
See you Friday. Okay, thank you.
And now we go back to closed session, right? Do we have any announcements on the way out?
We will not have any.
I think we're done with the agenda, right?
Right.
And no, nothing from closed session? So we'll adjourn from closed session.